Well, it's nine o'clock, so we'll call this regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court to order here in Titus County on June the ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll all rise for the prayer and the hemicameral.
Our dear gracious heavens, Father, we just thank you for the many blessings you've given us, Lord. And, Lord, we just ask you just to be with us now as we go into your, to this meeting, and ask you just to give us wisdom in all the things that we have to do. Lord, we just thank you for always taking care of us and watching over us. And, Lord, we just ask you right now just to be with us and go with us and forgive us what we've done. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, whose freedom and which is sand is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section five, five, one dot oh four two, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Have anybody who wants to speak in opening comments? Okay. Number two, considering possibly approve the minutes from the May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting of the Commissioners' Court?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve the minutes from May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five special meeting?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number three, considering possibly approve the appointing of a new board member for the Northeast Texas Regional Mobile Authority in the vagance of position represented by Titus County. This is the net real board, which Nathan Tofolia was on when he resigned from that and we removed him off of the net real board. This has a lot to do with highways and funding of that deal. I've spoken with Hudson Oles, and he's very interested in this and wanting to be a part of that and make the meetings and be an active voice in that. So with that being said, that's who I want to nominate to be on the net real board is Hudson Oles.
Make that motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewhite to nominate Hudson Oles to serve on the net real board.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any other comments on that discussion? All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? That will carry unanimously. Number four, considering possibly approve funding of two hundred thousand expended for road repair consisting of eight miles of County Road thirty-two sixty-five, County Road thirty-two sixty-eight, and County Road thirty-two seventy-five, and County Road thirty-two eighty-three, and County Road thirty-two eighty-five. And these are all in Precinct Three. Mr. Applewhite.
We got a lot of roads over there that's, they're just thirty-two seventy-five and sixty-five are just totally dangerous. One of them's, the road is just completely eat out and it's, you know, eating the side of the road and it's about a two-and-a-half-foot ditch there. So, you know, the rest of the roads are just more impassable every day. And I was just asking, because I had no money to do anything, and I just needed to get these here done. We'll be catching up some.
On that, Dana, with your road and bridge, I'm sure that you've got two hundred ninety-five thousand still in road and bridge money? Is that correct?
That's, that's.
No, in his actual balance. I think the fund balance is down to a hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Yes, he has two hundred ninety-five thousand, one forty-nine, but considering that, that one hundred, that has also not, that's balanced out in that as well, but he moved from his fund balance from the two sixty-nine about seven. So encompassed in that, two ninety-five that's left over and that hundred.
So he's only got a hundred, man?
He had a hundred and ninety-five hundred dollars in their fund balances. That's why I showed you that. You see what I'm saying?
And plus, that's what, that's included in there with salaries too, right?
You got it.
Got it.
You got it.
My understanding was there's just a hundred and sixty-one thousand left in the fund balance?
When you're looking at that house, it's one hundred in it. He's supposed to get that in there, is what I'm saying, so if he were to take that out, he would only have one ninety-five.
Does that count the salaries?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
For the salaries and everything?
Two ninety-five. Okay, two ninety-five. Which is about a hundred.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Which is worth about two hundred and fifty-five. So if you were looking at the original budget, you'd only have one hundred and fifty-five. If you had two ninety-five, did you reuse?
Right, because I'm down to nothing.
Is everybody, is that good, Charlie?
Yeah. Is that his twenty-five percent that's still left in there? Is that what, the percentage?
That's a one sixty-nine.
Okay.
He moved, like you guys have moved for equipment this year, he moved a hundred. So when you're looking at the two ninety-five left for him this year, you have to consider he already moved a hundred over there to make that. So his original budget would have been one ninety-five with a hundred that makes it the two ninety-five. So that's considering that transfer already.
But it's recommended to leave twenty-five percent there at all times for emergency.
I have no, I have no twenty-five percent.
Of his. So he doesn't have the twenty-five percent. He pulled down a hundred and only has one sixty-nine. He's a little shy of that.
Yes.
And our goal is always to never move.
So you're at the very middle of what you have in there, so.
Well, you know, the way I look at it, we all work off of budgets and we have to make it work, whatever it is. For taxpayer money to help out, I mean, that's, that's the way we run the whole county is everybody's on a budget. And that's my opinion.
Do you want me to speak for that? Because I can. Ever, when the budget is done every year, every single precinct, it's a specific amount of money. This year it was six hundred and seven thousand. The only money that you get over and above that is your auto reg, which was budgeted at one seventy. That number's been down for the last couple of years. So we increased the amount that the General County gave each precinct to offset the loss of the registration money. We hope that pulls back. We hope that that was due to different things that's happened in the last few years. We do see that pulling back up this year, so hopefully we'll meet that one seventy. But we used to budget off of one eighty. And so when we did the budget this year, the judge and us, we sat down and said, we need to give some more money to road and bridge, and we equally gave each and increasing the budget from the general budget.
So you're telling me any elected official that goes over their budget can come in here and ask for more money?
You can ask, don't mean you're gonna get it.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, any elected official that works off of budget, if they come in here and want a hundred thousand dollars, all they'll do is come to court and ask for it?
Okay. In reality, we did that all throughout the year for various reasons. I mean, emergencies happening?
Well, I mean, anything. A tornado can take out everything you got. I mean, but I'm talking about this.
You can come and ask for, for something, and it's up to you guys on the court to determine. We have the standards set out, but normally when a precinct comes to the General County in the past, in my experience here, it's been for a loan. You know, Precinct Three has a loan against the county for a piece of equipment. At one time, all four precincts had a loan against the county, and they each paid them off relatively within time. But I believe Precinct Three, Commissioner Applewhite is asking for the county to assist him in building up the funds he needs this year for a specific project to be utilized and spent within this year.
But it wasn't a loan, it's just handing that money, right?
So the other thing, there's two ways the county can address this.
I knew the Commissioners in the past have borrowed against next year's budget and stuff like that or pay it back.
And also, if you remember when we had the ARPA money, we used Department four-ten, and each of you got money out of four-ten to do special projects on your roads. Last year, after we extinguished one of the projects, there was funds left over. So we unilaterally split them four ways, because around a hundred and twenty, so you got to use that. So there's two ways the county can address this. If they want to facilitate Precinct Three, they can do a contingency line item transfer to Department four-ten and let these roads be budgeted out of that money so it's administered, and the oversight is still under the control of the judge. Or you can choose to do a transfer to Precinct Three, of which it would become, whatever is left over out of that money would then become part of that fund balance. There's two different avenues you can go. And if you want me to explain?
Melissa, are you thinking those revenues from over there will be coming up? You know your numbers better than I would.
I mean, I know that might increase, but I still don't see it getting to one seventy, one eighty, or whatever.
We used to budget one eighty, and I took it down to one seventy. And right now, with four more complete months that we're gonna have in revenue estimating that, we're under about twenty-eight. I feel we'll get the twenty-eight.
I feel like we'll get the twenty-eight, but I don't think we'll get much more.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not seeing it trending.
I don't think we're gonna get forty. I don't think so.
We won't see it exceed.
Exactly.
But the, because we percentage base the revenue that comes from taxes, okay, we budgeted six hundred and seven thousand dollars of the tax revenue we attributed to each other precinct. At this particular time, they have already met that, and we have exceeded it by forty-seven hundred. And we still have June, July, August, and September to receive in. So I do see that that's gonna be not a lot. You're not gonna get a lot more additional revenue off of that. You may see another fifteen thousand, wouldn't you say, maybe? We're on the low end of the tax revenue right now when both of it's coming in.
We're doing another little increase in July, but we don't think it's going to be that bad, so.
And your, you know, your lateral road is under, and so is the state receipts are a little bit under. Shy, not a lot, which we probably will see. So just to tell you guys, you laterally have us all.
Just a second?
Absolutely. Now, you stand up, just step up to the mic. You gotta give your name. Pull it, make sure it's on, and pull it down. We could get in trouble when we don't have them on.
I've recently moved, is it on? Out in, in the area that Dana's talking about, out there. Drove the roads for years, but now I'm on them daily. I think the specific, one of the specific areas he talked about where the road is washing away, it's right north of my house. And it is about a two or three-foot drop, and it's down to about one lane. And it continues to wash. Every time there's a heavy rain, it washes more. That's a hazard. Somebody's gonna come down through there that's not familiar at night and is gonna end up in that ditch probably overturned. He's patched the roads a few times, done the best he can. They need to be totally reworked. Safety is, like I said, it's rough on your vehicles. During, during the daytime, you can't tell a pothole or a washout spot from a shadow. It's just, they, they're really bad. They, they need some help.
We understand that, and like I said, when we got the budget, and y'all can speak as well, just wanna address what Chris was saying there. When, when we talked about splitting it up by road mileage and stuff, then we had people in Precinct One say, well, I don't want Precinct Three's road. And it, and it comes down to a lot of nonsense, is basically what it is, because we all live in Titus County. Whether you live there, where you live, and travel that road every day, we travel all the roads of Titus County, and we want all the roads to, to be in adequate shape for sure. And so that's one of the processes that we had. When we did have some of that money, we tried to split it four ways, and they had offered, Jeff offered, and Jimmy offered to give their part into Dana's, and he didn't do it at that time, so. But I appreciate that.
Mr. McGray, you're out.
Let me begin by taking just a moment to thank the court for hearing my concerns. My wife and I live on thirty-two sixty-five, and that's one of the roads that's being discussed. There's probably not many roads, if any roads, in Titus County that I have not traveled at one time or another. I would put up County Road thirty-two seventy-five in a contest to be the worst road in Titus County. Thirty-two sixty-five will run a close second, especially on the south end of it, where Chris was talking about. Actually, the north end of it, which, north and west, which, where I live, is, is a little bit better. I don't understand, I don't know the financial situation, and I don't understand the process, so I won't try to deal with the finance end of it. But I would like to encourage the members of the court to do what's necessary to do to bring Precinct Three roads up equal. In my years of travel on these roads, and that was basically before two thousand and three, but Precinct Three historically has always had the worst road system in Titus County. All the guys that worked for me would tell me that. I knew that, I saw it back when I was, when I was working. And somewhere along the line, something's got to change in order that Precinct Three can at least get up standard with everyone else. And, and I know that takes money to do, and I'm not trying to take any money away from anybody else's road or their precinct. But I do want to encourage the court to give serious consideration, because these roads really, I go down thirty-two seventy-five every day, and if, if, the best way to travel is the four-wheel-drive pickup. If you go on a tractor, you'll, you'll get bounced out of the seat. It, it is really, it, it really needs upgrading, needs some help. And, and I appreciate all of you, what you do for the county, but I encourage you to give us some serious consideration.
Well, I agree with you, Jody. Everybody ought to live within their budget, but the budgets have to be fair. And if the budget starts off wrong, it's hard to live within that budget. And I think four equal payments or allocations on the funds is not exactly fair when a couple of the precincts have twenty to twenty-five percent more mileage to have to keep up. It's sort of be like asking the sheriff back here to feed all the prisoners on the budget, and he allocates it per jail cell and not per individual. Some of those guys are gonna get fatter because there's not very many people in the cell, and others are gonna get skinnier. And I know that's a weird, you know, analogy, but if Precinct Three and Four are running with twenty-five percent more, it makes it extremely hard to them. And you're talking about the constituents, yes, it's gotta be fair to the constituents of the county, which they have constituents in their, their precincts just like anybody else. So to me, if it started out wrong and it starts out short, then it makes it more difficult to keep up the number of roads, which is what he's trying to deal with now. Whether we agree or disagree on how a person takes care of their precinct, that's something else. But as far as the future's concerned, for the individuals that are holding y'all's positions, they've gotta have some way to be able to keep up the, the number of miles that they're taking care of.
Precinct, Precinct Four has the same amount of miles as Precinct Three.
That's what I said.
And we have no trouble, I mean, he has no trouble. His budget looks good and all that, so, you know.
And I tell you what, I, I know for a fact that Precinct Three, I mean, sorry, Precinct Four, their base is a lot different. I mean, they got a lot of iron ore, which the maintenance over a period of time is less.
When, when you were judge, did y'all divide it out differently?
We did it per mile. We took out a certain amount per precinct to cover the employees and the commissioner's salaries, and whatever was left after a base amount was distributed to the precincts based on the number of miles of road. And we.
That's what we discussed earlier.
It was for.
And that's why we can't do it that way, right?
It was for equal. Excuse me.
I'm gonna ask her, when we talked about doing that and spreading it by, by those mileage, you said then we have to do different workers? You gotta have less workers in, in just precinct than you would in that other precinct? Is that what you said?
No.
When it's broke down that way?
No, I, I did not say that in the sense of, of that. I mean, someone might perceive that, that your staffing would be in alignment with your roads. I mean, that is a logical avenue to look at. The, the only comment that came to me on the reason why it was done is because population and travel-wise, having the most roads doesn't mean you have the most traffic systematically. That was why, when I asked, why would you do percentages? And so they would say, we base ours on population, because you can have a precinct with a lot of roads but not have many people going out, you know? So that was the determination, and maybe that got construed as staff, but what I was talking about was population. They do it based on the population segments that each precinct generally has. Just because you have the most roads don't mean you have the most people.
But you'd asked the question about if we did it on mileage. When I first went in, we did not. And the Commissioners had discussed it over a period, probably a couple of years, if I remember. And it was very similar then, plus Texas Utilities was fixing Precinct Two's roads, okay? The county was not having to pay for that, and it was a struggle to divide it equally because they were, there were so many fewer miles, and the, it was same then, Three and Four had the most miles. And as the city's grown, I think they've probably taken in more of Jeff's roads than they have anyone's. And there's some, some counties that, the way their precincts are divided up based on population, that some of the precincts are almost contained totally within the city. I don't know if Tyler's one of them, it seemed like Tyler has one.
Rockwell and some of them were.
And all of those are up kept by the, the city. Well, how can you allocate the money when the city's taking care of the roads, the road and bridge fund for the, that precinct will mean nothing. And so it's the same with having more miles of road out in rural areas.
What year did they change it back the way it is now?
I don't know. I didn't know it had been changed back, Jody. I didn't know that until this past week, and I have no idea why they went back to a per-mile basis. I mean, a four-equal portion.
Yeah, four-equal portion.
Mr. Oliver, do you want to speak?
Thank you, Alfred.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Gary Oliver. I live pretty much in the middle of thirty-two sixty-five. I've been there for thirty-two years, almost to the day. My in-laws moved there, across the road from me, about eight years prior to me moving. So I've been up and down that road for the last forty years. And in that time, that road has not been replaced. It's been patched a few times, but it is, it is really sad. I mean, you come out there and drive it, you'll, you'll understand. Thirty-two seventy-five, when it's in, when it's in good repair, it's a mile closer for me to come in and out, going, going back and forth to town. But I don't travel it now because of the sad repair of it very often. As far as what Alfred was saying about the fairness of the way the money's divided, I certainly agree with him. Recently, we don't have, we don't have very many large trucks or whatever traveling our road. I mean, on occasion, there are some. But recently, with, I mean, we had a tornado come through the edge of my place, what, about three months ago, whenever it was, and we had trees down. I couldn't even get in, coming, coming in from thirty-two sixty-five. I had to come thirty-two seventy-five through the bottom even to get home that day. And I know there's been a lot of trees down all over the county, but when that happens and you bring equipment in and have to clean them trees up, it damages the road. And so I, I don't know if the damage would be any less on a, on a nice improved road or not, but on one that it's not too good to start with, it sure plays havoc on it, because there's places out there now that since, since the storm, is considerably worse than it was before that. I think that's about all I got to say about it, but we, we certainly would appreciate getting our, our roads repaired, totally repaired, not just patched.
The way I've seen it in the past is, the only way you're really gonna get anything done on these roads, if you put a big lump sum all at one time on them, just, the money we get in our budget is not enough, and that's basically, you run right through it, just trying to maintain and patch your roads, and you're done, you're out of money. So the only way I see it is, you know, I've been in the road business, building road my whole life, and still in the construction business today, and to see any kind of, any way to do this, you're gonna have to put a big lump sum in it, you know, to, to see any results.
I do want.
Go ahead.
I did want to add that when we did the analysis, it was only like eighty thousand dollars more a year attributed. It's not, and speaking of Mr. Parchman, it sounds to me like there's an infrastructure issue here that needs to be addressed, whether we reallocate the way we fund the money or the way we actually schedule the roads. That's what you were referring to when we were talking about staffing. Everybody schedules their workers differently, and so some think the workers get better this way. That's what we had discussed. I remembered that, and I do want to be transparent about whether or not, how much time are you getting from these workers based on the schedules that are designed? That was the question on that. The other thing is, is if this is an infrastructure problem, it has to be addressed as an infrastructure problem. So my recommendation in the sense of accommodating a precinct would be to do what we did when we got the ARPA money and isolate it within for the road repairs. That way, if the money is spent, everybody sees how the money's being spent, how the money's going, it's not within just one precinct. And I'm just talking about that, about the two hundred. And then that way, the materials and the roads and everything will be budgeted out of General County for this emergency repair, distinctively based on the plan that was put in place, and address that. Then the secondary issue we have is whether or not we're distributing the funds. I think we have two different things here that we need to look at as a county. One is, what do we do to fix an issue that we have within the county structure? The second is, is how do we budget that moving forward?
What we had talked about in that, as well before, and what I would like to see in the, in the budget coming up this next year, is to each Commissioner go through his roads. I don't have no control over which roads these guys work on, that's, that's strictly up to them. I give, all I control is the budget, and then they decide which roads that they want done. What I would like to see done is that they grade their roads, the worst ones down to the least ones, and then they can pick, I don't know how many miles of road those two roads are that, that y'all are talking about. Dana, how many miles?
It's eight miles, I would consider.
But you've got several roads listed there.
Right.
I'm talking about the two roads that they say are the worst two in the county. Do we know how many miles of road that is?
I had to figure it out, but next season, it's about.
This is what I want to do.
It's about this.
Go ahead. What I want to do is, not saying that the Commissioners don't know how to build a road, what I'd like to do is to figure out what's, in each precinct, what's your worst three miles of road for each precinct? And allocate so much money and have a bid out, and have someone that comes in and does that road, tears it all way up, builds the base, puts the base down. If it's, if it's two miles of road that we can fix a year, let's fix two miles of road, and then move to the, to the next precinct, fix two miles of road, and do that with a company that comes in and does that for a for a living, and then our guys can come back and they can maintain those roads, patch those roads, and do those things. They can come in and fix two miles of roads, some of these bigger companies can come in and fix those within a week or so, whereas it'd take us part of a whole summer to get a road because of weather and stuff like that. They've got the crews that can come in and do it, I'd like to see us do that, and if it's $300,000 a year or $400,000 a year that we can put over into that, I'm not for putting any money, and I'm not picking on Dana, I'm not for putting any lump sum into any commissioner's pot, because any of that's left over goes into their fund balance. If I'm, my personal opinion-
Control it in general.
If we do anything, it would be set aside in a fund there, because I don't control which roads they get to work on, but if it's put aside in a spot there, then I know exactly what road is done, if it's two miles of their roads that they're talking about today, if they're not done, then that money don't just go into a fund balance, I know where the money's gone, it's transparent, and then that way, I can say, "No, we've still got $300,000 and these two miles of road haven't been fixed yet, and that money's not going into a fund balance." That's just me personally, because I don't control which roads they work on, I control the budget, and I want to be transparent to our taxpayer, I want to be transparent to all four precincts, they get votes out of their precinct, I get them out of all four precincts. And so, I want all the county roads in Titus County to be good, when I ran the first time, we ran them better together, and I think we're starting to do some of that with the city, but now we need to grow together, and as, hearing a little bit off subject, you're gonna find out what our water bill's going to, over $100,000 a year. So, those are some things that we've got to look at, we've got to be frugal with the taxpayers' dollar, I know we've got three guys, four guys here from precinct three today, when we started talking about dividing it up into mileage, then we had some from precinct one, precinct two, they said, "Well, I pay my taxes, my roads, it's not your roads, it's our roads, and we gotta work together." And so, my opinion only, I'd like to see us where we grade those and move that money around, get a bid on it for two miles, three miles, whatever that fund is that we feel like, once we get this budget worked out with me and Nanette here, that we can fix a road. Not saying these guys can't fix a road, I'm just saying, when they've just got four hands in their precinct and their sales, it's hard to come in and totally fix a road, put the base down and do it. What these guys need to do is to keep the ditches clean, keep the trees off the roads, and that way, the water don't tear our roads up. Until we fix the water problems, it don't matter who builds the road, it's gonna tear the road up. And we had a whole lot of water last night, thankfully, we missed a lot of the storm, Jody's been out since about 2:00 this morning trimming trees and getting those off the roads, but until we get a base down, and then we've got to fix those ditches and keep the water off. I'm not a road man myself, but it don't take a rock, if you've got water running over them roads, the roads are gonna be bad. Sorry, Mr. Amerson, I didn't mean-
No, hey, you touched on a few things, you know, I think that's getting to the root of the problem, you know, solve the root, you still keep fixing the symptom. You know, when we first started, we said, "We pray God give us wisdom", well, there's wisdoms to create solutions to help each other, the foundation is, we're in the county together. So, within each of our precincts, what's going on that we can start helping one of it generate something to be able to sow into the next one? For example, if you have one area, there's a lot more developed, and roads need to be fixed, and you borrow from one and then you send back to the other, you start generating more tax dollars from the other one to pay for the other one. So, there's creative ways to start looking within the governmental system to support one another that will generate more, right? We already have more interest in this area with the smackover, with the whole lithium stuff, you got gas plants coming in Naples, so there's a lot of things that could be helpful if we steward them right and start working in our areas together to do that. And I think, you know, you hit a lot of that on getting to the root of things and how we approach those. So, you know, that's kind of just the basis, we're getting into every single technical thing, you know, you approach it technically, yeah, there's not a lot of traffic in the area, you have to take care of the other ones, but there are ways to figure out, how do we manage that together? And we know, we're not always left with the best, right? Things hadn't been maintained for 40 years, now we're actually taking up the responsibility of what didn't get maintained. Now, what do we do? So, we've got to figure out solutions and ask God, "Give us wisdom, how we do it together that we haven't thought of, how do we generate new things, how do we incentivize new things to be built, right? You drop prices, you sell more products, right? You invest in the infrastructure, the people, the roads, I think more houses start coming up, you actually provide more into the area, so, thank you.
And that's exactly what I want to do, and like I said, they just said it, for how many ever years out there, it's not just Dana's fault, for years and years and years, the road hadn't been taken care of properly, the right base under it or whatever, until we get the right base under it, we're just throwing money, so, I don't want to keep throwing money at a problem and it's not solving it. If we keep doing the same thing over and over, we're gonna get the same results. So, if we bring something in, bid those roads out, three to four miles at a time, and get a base underneath them, make sure the ditches are good, then these guys can do their job and make sure everybody's roads are better in Titus County. And hopefully, by the end of the month, we'll have some more income coming in, and we can make that announcement, hopefully, Mr. Amerson, soon. Any more discussion?
I'm making a motion, we pass it.
Pass what?
This, number four, the spending.
How do you want to spend it?
Fixing them roads, because some of them are, you know, like I said, it's gonna take $25,000 a mile just for us to do.
Now, I agree with Dana on that, $25,000 is not a lot of money, and like I told you before, you're not gonna see any results unless you, if it's $100,000, $200,000, whatever it is, then he can maintain his roads once they're built. I'll second that.
That a motion and a second? I don't know how that they're making this motion and seconding that motion, Mr. Nanette, there's two different options on the way to do it, whether we fund it over into Dana's or if we put it in a group that I can control and know when those roads are done, I'd rather it be put into that so it don't go into a fund balance at the end of the year, then their roads may not be fixed, I'm not saying they don't get fixed, but then that way, we know that they've been fixed in the project. It's gotta be a project, you can't just ask for $200,000 and say what you're gonna do on the roads.
Okay, so what I'm understanding is, is the motion would be to budget $200,000 from contingency and Department 410 under road repairs for precinct three, and then we're gonna go out and get some bids on those being done by a third-party vendor and utilize those funds to pay that, starting in this current year, is that the way I'm understanding?
Well, back up, Dana, you want to build those roads yourself, or do you, I mean, it'd be cheaper to do, you'll get a lot more done if you build them yourself, because you hire a contractor company, it's gonna cost a lot, you might not get four miles, but you get eight miles doing it yourself.
Even if you build them itself, the money can be isolated in Department 410 where we budgeted all of the other road money that the county gave, that was never in your department budgets. Once it moves over into your fund, it becomes controlled by you. If the county allot's the funds to you to be utilized for a specific emergency fund to fix a road for an emergency purpose, we budget that money in a department, of which all of you sign and see every bill this county brings through, the judge will sign off on those, it's in your department oversight. So, any materials that would be purchased to do that road repair would come out of those funds, not yours, you would be doing your general out of yours, your normal repair and maintenance, is that what we're taking a motion on?
I didn't make the motion, he made the motion.
Yes.
He's second, so you're gonna have to ask him, so.
That'd be fine, like I said, that, you know, you want to see where the money's going to, I don't mind.
I mean, then you're basically budgeting for a project, you're not budgeting for a transfer.
And with that much money, you might get nine or 10 miles out of there, you don't, we don't know for sure how much you're gonna, how many miles you're gonna get out of it.
But you, you know, I'm not trying to put no money nowhere else, if they, you know, I'm not trying, I want to be transparent about everything.
Here's another point that I want to add in relationship to it probably being a positive thing to do it in Department 10, because when we go into budget this year, we can do an analysis that anything can happen between now and September that this project does not get completed, we know. Rain sets us back, I know many of you have budgeted projects every year from your fund balance money and didn't get to spend any of it because the conditions were not conducive for you to do it. So, that is a good thing for it to be in this location, but then that doesn't mean if you don't spend it this year, it can't roll over. And we can use an example of what we did with Talco, when we allotted the money from the county to do a specific project for Talco, because Talco did not have the means and the funds, they were using, then we decided that Talco was gonna get the money for the materials and they were gonna provide some labor, you know, we could modify the project. So, that's an option, and then that way, I think it makes it to where the road repair is a county project and not a precinct project. And so, I know oftentimes you facilitate each other, so this may make some of you feel like, "Hey, we can send some labor your way to help you get this finished, because I know you all work together, I know a lot of times you help people, you have a person with an expertise in an area on your crew, you willfully and gladly facilitate your other precinct with that knowledge." So, that would probably make it more of a countywide project, being facilitated for a precinct three location and pretty much being managed by the judge, that's-
Alfred, you go first.
I just have a question about the bidding process, how long is that taking?
They're not wanting to do that. They're not wanting to do that.
They're wanting to do it theirs-
They want to do it themselves. They want to do it themselves.
I know, but it was brought up about bidding, Jeff and someone mentioned about bidding it.
I mentioned about bidding it out, they said they don't want to, they want to do it themselves.
They think that it's more hard to do it not to.
Which is back to the same thing that y'all are telling me, I've lived here all my life, Alfred, I don't know how many years you've been here, but you said precinct three's always been bad, so, in my opinion, in my opinion only, we're throwing money at the same problem, and are we gonna fix it that way?
I just talked about-
So, yes, bidding it-
You know, it is a bidding project, I thought about-
Yes, bidding it takes a while. Yes, it makes it a while to bid the project, but do you get the same results, or do you change and do something different, so?
But we would still budget it the same way, whether it was bid it either way, because they want to budget it in the county budget, not the precinct budget. So, for me, budgeting, if they want to-
Allocate the funds, all different than-
Yeah, we'll allocate it, and what they decide, we'll do, but he was saying that, but if he doesn't complete this project by the end of the year, he has to know that we have an investment in the project, that we're gonna roll the balance into the next year so he doesn't have to ask for it again, you know? So, I keep up with those numbers and-
Well, Dana inherited those roads, and Commissioner Ford had probably inherited that road, and all they've done is try to keep the holes passed, and it's got to a point now where he's gonna have to go in there and do whatever you do to build the road. I mentioned that north of my house, it's something that road may have to be closed down, because it's a danger, somebody's gonna get hurt on that road. We get, if it goes down through the summer and into the fall, and there's another heavy fall rainy season, that road will be ruined, so.
There's a lot of them over there, up north of Red River.
I know.
Go check some of their roads out.
I've heard these county roads are working for you, until you're on the daily, you really don't, you may go down a road once a month, but until you're on the daily, you just see them deteriorate, and these particular roads are already very bad to drive on the cluster, I'd say, they're getting to the point where they're safe.
And when it comes to budgeting, there's no set in stone format for that, we could budget in this current year to get it started, and we could go out for bids for more infrastructure projects moving into the next fiscal year. So, it sounds to me like we don't have a two-month fix here, it sounds to me like it's a bigger, more in-depth fix, so you can start the process with what's been requested today within oversight of a county, just, and if somebody else ended up with an issue with a road, address it that way, over and above their normal maintenance, and then get the information necessary to produce bids to take them out, and then we can determine from the bids what is in the best interest of the county financially and timeline-wise. So, you could do a mixture and still start addressing a problem as we're looking for better solutions.
I'm gonna say one thing, that I've got quite a bit in my fund balance, but it's simply because I inherited good roads when I took office, like, 10 years ago, but the last couple of years, I hadn't been able to do a whole lot, so my money has rolled over to my fund balance. I'm hoping to, if this rain will let up here in the next week or two, I'm hoping to be able to start some roads and get some done this summer. It's gonna take a lot of work and all, but I have got money in my fund balance that I can do that, and it's simply because the last, I know, two years, I hadn't been able to do anything, that money has just rolled over for that purpose that I can take it and use it, you know, when I need to.
For the big years, when you can get out there and do the roads, because you guys plan projects every year and get, you get shut down, and then sometimes you can do roads up to December, and then sometimes you get hit and you can't, so, it is a lot to do with what you can get done in the timeframe, even with this, it may not be able to get done within the timeframe.
And another thing that you gotta look at there, Jimmy's working on his roads, and Jody's working on his, and Jeff's working on his, it's only gonna leave four people in his to tear those roads up, we do have that machine that we bought two years, a year ago, I don't think we've used it, so maybe we can get it to use.
Most of the time, we, each commissioner tears the roads up, puts it back, the only time that we need help is when we're chip sealing.
Chip sealing.
That's, that's-
We all work together with that. You got enough crew member there to do all you-
Yeah, I get the drum.
You got a million-dollar equipment, all you need is material, get the job done.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Applewack, and a motion seconded by Commissioner Parchman. Any other discussion?
And that's to do what I had stated earlier?
Yes, once again.
Yes, so you put it, that'd be, that's fine with me.
Set it up?
It's a, yes.
And then when you order for that, we'll denote what those orders are for, and then what you'll know, and everyone will know what roads those materials are going on, simple it, we'll handle it very similar to a CERTS grant-
Okay.
-within the construction that we have in there, and so we'll know what all the supplies or the materials for that project.
So, Mr. Durant, Mr. Oliver, Mr. Magrani, and Mr. Flanagan, when y'all call and say these roads aren't done, then I'll know, and I can, I've got a decision, I ain't got no decision the other way, so, so, I can't say, I don't get to change, I don't get to say what road they work on if it's done that way.
But I got a question too, before doing that, on that 3265 that was deteriorating, Mr. Flanagan and I talked about re-venturing a culvert, where it's coming out, where we'll hit that, do I need his written permission to go on his property to redo that?
As long, I would want, I don't think we have to have it, but I think we would want it, and we're not supposed to be on private property, but if it is causing that road to wash and it's a public hazard to the road, then we can-
Well, we can reroute it.
Reroute that water.
We cut straight into the road, and he and I discussed this last summer, and I told him to back off out there and straighten that out before we go straight to the culvert, and that's, I'll give you whatever your permission then.
Not that we have to have it, but I'd rather have it as transparency, that way they say, "Well, Alfred Flanagan, Dana's on Alfred Flanagan's road out there, on his pasture working, and why didn't you come to my pasture and work on my pasture?", then I can say, "Well, this is the reason, and we've got it all documented." John Marco, he'll put his approval on it, that way it keeps him out of trouble and you out of trouble, it's transparency.
So, you were saying that you want to do something similar to this on like a yearly basis for commissioners that may have like an emergency road to be taken care of?
No emergencies, no, I want to have a plan for Titus County, just like when we come here, we didn't have any maintenance plans on our air conditioning, on our buildings and things of that nature, we just waited till the water started coming down to see if the roof was okay, I want a plan. So, I would like to fix two miles, three miles, four miles of road, depending on what the budget comes out, and a lot of that amount of money. I want it bid out, they don't want to bid it out, I guess, they want to do it themselves, but as Mr. Amerson said, if you keep doing the same thing, get the same product, if you're building, if you're making a cave and it comes out bad every time, you ought to change the ingredients, in my opinion, but I'd like to- But, I'd like to fix four miles of road, five miles of road and work it around precincts. We used to do it with the fire department, buy this one a truck, that one a truck. I'd like to fix the roads. I'd like to, I'm not saying the guys can't fix them, I just think a crew can come in, professionally do it, slope it off, make sure it's all good, make sure the ditches are right, and that turns into a, a road that you're maintaining, not that you're having to tear up.
So, how would you decide who, which, which roads those were? That be voted on in Commissioners' Court?
Possibly.
And does this set precedence for that to happen in the future with the settlement?
Not set any precedence.
No? Okay.
Well, just so that the court will know, I mean, a few years back, they stopped it, but it used to be an annual responsibility for every commissioner to, to put a road plan in. You guys know what I'm talking about.
It was state law.
And it was a state law and they had to present one. And then the state, they didn't, they did away with the law. So, this isn't something new to the commissioners, maybe to the new ones that didn't have to experience it, but putting a road plan together has been pretty standard. And just because the state no longer made it a mandate, I think a lot of counties still do them, just so that you know when you're doing your budget, what your plan is to do that year. So, this isn't anything that's.
I think a road plan'd be great for each commissioner. I'm not putting that on them, that's their job and they're the ones running for the office. I think it's great because it gives transparency and that way, if their roads are the, the bad ones and they say, well, I'm not working on those roads, I'm working on one over here, that they, in their opinion, thinks better. So, then they can sit down there with commissioners, say, well, why do you think this road's better? And that'd be between them and the commissioners. Like I said, I don't have no control over which road that any of these commissioners fix in their, in their precinct. That's their call and that's their determination on which road needs to be fixed.
You asked Alfred earlier, uh, when the, when that was changed, where they did mileage, and we don't know exactly when, but it was sometime between his tenure and Judge Lee, cause I called Brian and he didn't set that during his, it was like it is now. So, sometime between in there. Not that that matters, I'm just letting you know, cause you asked.
So, who are you gonna evaluate the roads? What, they're all every year in precinct three, the roads are the, are the worst? How would you do that?
Be the son.
Oh.
That's why I would like to have an independent person come in, evaluate the roads. That's the way, it's not just as, is they're bad and you're so, you're bad. You got an independent person, which is gonna cost the county some money to bring some independent person in, evaluate each roads. He'll give us a list of the top 20 roads that are, are needing repairs in Titus County. And if it happens to be your roads, it's good for you, if it happens to be yours, it's good for you.
You might get someone out of Atlanta to come and walk the roads, because they do the CERTS grants there and they do come out and evaluate the roads as well. Might be a way to get, um, some information, you know, from a, from an independent source.
Like I said, the only fair way to do it, be an independent person, because if you're not fighting for your constituents in precinct three for your roads and Jeff's not saying, oh, well, yeah, his are all bad, well then, what has Jeff done to his people? If, if you don't stand up and fight for your people, I'd say you probably wouldn't be here long, but I don't know. That's why I think it has to be an independent person to come in, look at the roads and say, hey, these are roads that are gonna stop 20 roads. And if that's 200 miles, we can do five miles of roads and that's how many years it takes us to complete those. So, I've got a motion made by Commissioner Applewatt, a second made by Commissioner Parksman. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, three to one.
Thank you, Alfred.
Thank you, Alfred. Number five, approve oil. Could I make a little short public announcement? You came at this time, or, or something on the agenda? No. That we've been in the opening comments, public comments, only time we can make anything that's not on the agenda. All right. Sorry. No problem. Number five, approve oil and written reports of county officials.
Make a motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parksman.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Applewatt to approve the oil and written reports of county officials. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously. Number six, consider and possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carries unanimously. Number seven, approve budget amendments.
I'm gonna read this budget amendment that related to item number three. That's not part of this budget amendment, but I will have to prepare a budget, I mean, for item four, I will have to prepare a budget amendment for that. So, I, I can either add it to this budget amendment or I can take it through court next time.
Take it through court.
Take it through court, okay, all right. Okay, so this budget amendment is 25 dash 14. This is for the water meeting redealer issue at the jail. We're having to increase the budget $13,000 just for the last part of this year. Um, did you wanna speak on that, Judge, or don't you?
Uh, me and Chris have talked about this before and we've got the architects coming, uh, I believe it's next week, uh, to meet with us over there and go over some jail issues and maybe some expansion in the future. Uh, we had talked to, um, down there in Henderson and, uh, they call it recreational flushing, I believe is what they call it in the, in the jails. A prisoner will get there and just go to hitting the, hitting the toilet over and over and over. There is some kinda things that they can put in there in place, that there's only so many flushings and can control some of that. My understanding was there's some type of leak down there. I don't know if it's on our side, Chris, or if it's on the city's side.
City's.
On the city's side.
And in a new meter.
That should affect us. We did get a new meter.
That's what caused it.
And as, as everybody in Titus County, uh, in the city has learned, uh, once they put it in a new meter, all of a sudden your rates go up, well, ours is no different and ours is gonna be, our water bill in the county is gonna be close to a hundred thousand dollars next year. So, uh, we do wanna talk to that gentleman when he comes about that as well. Chris, I don't know if that's something that helps us or doesn't help us, but it costs money to put in, but it may help us in, in the long run. And, uh, but Chris is saying that water leaks on their side, so that's not counting.
Yeah, when I called the other day, there was, the city said they didn't know, Amy said she didn't know. I said, well, can you get them to get together and determine, cause we need to get it fixed, so.
Right. So, anyway, that's, that's what we're looking at. Like I said, uh, when the city hall, they were lined up down there talking about their water bills in the city, well, we're one of them. So, it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we're gonna have to budget next year just for the water in the county, so.
That's the only, that's the only item on that budget amendment.
Make motion to approve budget amendment.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to approve the budget amendments.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parksman. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Carry unanimously.